We will not be able to. I probably. We will have to deal with the cemetery. They they probably improve. Number one.
Well, that's the reason. I have to have at least one person that's for reelection every year. And. So. We want for, you know, you may draw a one year term and you got to run it next year. And they draw two, three, four, five. And then to get those six and seven people, I've got one through five on the other pole. And I'm going to ask this girl just to draw out two of these to play in here. And maybe one, two, three, four, five, but that'll work with fair and unbiased. And we'll not just say. That was two. That's always good. Okay. I think this is as random as I can do it. And then when you get your number, it's even put your name on the back of it. Yes, so our one year. Have one with a one year term limit that's Cassie and Ballis. We have two with a two year term limit, so we'll have two at election two years. That's Kirk Rose and Rorham Happy. We have one with a three year term and one is Allie. Two with a four year term, Chris Harper and Robert Moore. And one with a five year term, Robin Harst. That's why I'll submit to ASVA into our family department.
It's all about game. I'm just going to follow up. Mama, Papa, Mama, Mama, Mama. About to consent this again. All all in favor of saying that? All come at the same time. But now we'll put finance on fourth. Look over. Because they need like that in questions. If there's no question. Motion to accept the financial reports written. I must accept that report. Same time. Except details of finance report. Friends more than said everybody. From last meeting. Nation twenty four and didn't say the committee. A few firsts. I've got questions about the minutes. The motion to accept the minutes from previous meetings. All in favor of this motion to say. That might just be presentation of awards.
And before we do that, just real quickly, since they were able to come tonight, I wanted to introduce some of our new personnel that we have so everybody knows who they are. And Lucy Wolf. Our new garden hospital principal, so we'll put a place with the name. And then Charles Blackwell, our new middle school principal for the upcoming year. And we actually have one of our new middle school teachers and coaches here with us. And for tomorrow, he's going to be doing middle school math and some coaching responsibilities in the afternoons. And he's working on his leadership program, so he's going to attend a few board meetings and see how that works. So I'd be willing to just introduce him real quickly to on board and since they're able to be here tonight. And we do have three presentations tonight. And. We've got a presentation for employer support regard and reserve award. And I'm going to let y'all kind of been just tell about that and usually do just tell me when you need me in this for bragging.
Good evening, I'm Richard Green with the Florida National Garden Reserve. And before we get into the present award and recognizing outstanding school district of Garden. Got to say a couple of words of my good friend and the leader Colonel Mike Spraggins. I've been in the God was in the garden a long time and there's not a finer person that ever wore a uniform than Colonel Spraggins. You know, it says in Isaiah, the Bible Isaiah six eight, he called down to Isaiah and said, who shall send, who will go for us? And Isaiah said, here I am, Lord, send me. Carl Spraggins has been saying send me for his whole career. I'm sure we just appreciate how he does this nation. Say we're in borders for the garden reserve, we're a department of defense agency that creates a culture of support for the national garden reserve throughout the nation. It's very important that over half the defense of this nation now is in the national garden reserve. Over fifty percent is in the garden reserves. Four people you see out there with uniform on, two of them are going to be members of garden reserve. Here at home taking care of my home front and combat. So to recognize people that are supporting the garden reserve is extremely, extremely important. So. The garden of its school district has done a tremendous job of supporting Colonel Spraggins and the entire defense of this nation. Got a special award. Accept this on behalf of the garden public school. It's a special award is recognizing Garden as a school district as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employers. This place in America's national garden reserve, which may be a true defense heart action. Thank you so very, very much. And one other document we'd like to leave with you, this is our statement of support. Now, second name, if you, this is saying that you support that in garden reserve, that's pretty obvious what you're going to do. So this is taken for issue by. Or also my secretary of defense.
Thank you.
I would like to say just a quick word, you know, when when the conflict was was started with Ukraine and I was talking to my friends in US Army Europe where I worked a few years ago. They definitely asked if I could come help. And then I came and sat down in their office with Ms. Thomas and said, I really feel I have an obligation to go back and help right serve before because there was there was some vacancies. And and there was no hesitation, I appreciate that. Mr. Harper, you came and told me to go home, pack my bags and quit messing with school and and that that shows a lot of your character and I appreciate that support. And and Angie stepped right in and helped the school go and and my staff. So so everybody was was really supportive. And and it's and it's true, and I said this in front of active duty soldiers in US Army Europe, I said, this is amazing that I can come and step in and do this. Only reason I can do it is because people like this are back here holding out. So thank you for your support and all of the others.
Mr. Spraggins, if you'll just come back up and if you have an opportunity to not help you with this other, I know you've got a presentation, but I have a presentation first, but if you would be happy to join me.
Portland, would you come up with? And Ms. Ginger, you can watch, because you're the student.
We received notification on. I did at Garden Primary School was selected as a capturing kids' hearts national showcase school. I recognizing hard work on the campus and and wanted to make sure that we share that good news with our community. And they did send a certificate for the school and they also will be publishing Garden Primary among a list of other awarded campuses on their website. And so I just want to thank Mr. Spraggins and his staff. I know he's he replied to me that Ms. Ginger and Ms. Ginger were doing a great job in his absence, someone got this notice. But it was a full year effort on everyone's part and students involved as well. So I did want to present this to you and that John's going to want to feature.
And I I think this means that we could get visited by other schools. To see what we're doing with programs, so that's that's a good thing for our district.
Mr. Spraggins has a presentation.
One of the things that I I like to do is to recognize as pots of safe soldiers, recognize students when they do amazing things. And we've had several really, this fourth grade class was just a tremendous group of students. And so many leaders in there, but one of the things Portland did in the end year, she just decided she's going to help me make sure that flag got up today. And they learned how to hold it and they they were very judicious about making sure it got up. They they got me in line, Mr. Spraggins with the flag and and they would Portland would go around up a couple of people help her and she would teach them how to do it on salutes as the flag raises, the other two would raise the flag. And even when I was gone, I checked in and Portland was still going, so I want to do something special to recognize her. So here's a certificate of appreciation and I thought this would be only fitting that I would give you the flag that threw up the school this year. And so I just wanted to present that to you and say thank you for your leadership and and give you something to remember this year by.
What's Portland's last? Robert. She's a fourth.
Yeah, and I think it includes a note subtly that helps some in our elder package. So on the ASVA policies, Caesar and Lee subscribe to your political board association. They have a legal team that writes policy for schools based on any legislation that comes out and make sure we are in compliance, our policies are in compliance with state law. And and they send us the model policies and as they update them, we do the updates. And so in your packet, you'll see any policies that were changed or added sits the last set that we received earlier this spring. And it just gives a little synopsis of what changed. And these are policies we already have in place, they're on our website and mine are changed. There was one new policy this time, seven point one, seven of two, not discrimination and big service programs that's based on a new law. And so it's a new policy, so I did include that full model policy for you to review. But I want you to accept these tonight and we'll update our policies. Current policies along with the law prior to July first twenty twenty. And they usually send out updates in January and then again sometime around May for any type of special session or new laws or new rules and come out. And it's usually about twice a year that we get some policy updates.
You have a question? Motion to approve this, I guess we as. Model policy updates. Motion that second. And I didn't have the most. Same side. That's um, out business is. You got a plan to the ASVA for. Probably be your model equipment. Big size of that. Thirty nine people.
And we get this annually from ASVA and corporate insurance risk management program and are discharged our detectives and actually these past few years we've been able to. Really benefit from this policy because the roof that was in the room. It's a four million dollar project that we paid five thousand dollars. So maybe they fully covered the replacement of that cost to me. And so it really does is beneficial vehicles and I did go over with Destin, all the vehicles were moving out of the land. You sort of do adoption and adding anything that wasn't on the list, make sure we had the right of vehicles equipment on there. So I did verify that all of this is current.
I do have one question that I have. In some of the repairs on the roof.
I'm working with our insurance adjuster and risk management supervisor on that, so I contacted them about that and I was getting mentioned in the study, but we also had some rotten wood. Um, come up in the roof over at GPS around the edge, that we're going to have to figure out. They can't get the roof on rotten wood, going to have to replace that. So I'm supposed to be trying to get an estimate for that and working with insurance and working on that. So there will be more information, I'll make sure whoever's here next or has that information. But I'm writing on an indication of how we switch to those. We get from the versus for the water line. Or they are reading versus for that, it's about sixteen hundred dollars.
See my my questions call for insurance policy. Or time time of call to the insurance. What was the opinion last week?
Not the list, you remember around it, they said bring in across the nation, but I'm at this year, but I don't. Off the top of my head.
My questions cannot be a motion to approve. Putting payment to the ASVA insurance.
Same.
Member for Saya. Alright, you need to be some side. Next album, let's do this is. Time of twenty four thirty four building improvement project. From the school management high school.
So each year principals are required to have their school information. First, we need time to repair it. Also usually have Mr. Bell look out to because he's he works heavily in this area too. And and then they come to the board in June for approval. And these can be revised, you know, later if they need to be, if we get our test board out of that in August and see if there's some things that need to be tweaked, we can revise these and run them back in the middle of the year. And within September, August, September, Jeremy will have a district support plan that basically we take their current plans, say how's the district going to support this work? And then working with our professional art community teams and alignment, curriculum. There's are are pretty aligned, you know, with each other on our goals. And but we do have to have a literacy goal in there. And so all of the requirements that the state asks for in here, this doesn't mean this is all we're going to do, but these are the things we're required to specify how of an address at each building. And I do have our consultation, I think, from each campus, if you have a specific question about anyone that you read. And that these do get posted on our website, gets submitted to the state and our district support plan comes to you later showing how this is.
We got a question in high school part. Goal of them. School of our size across the state.
Well, it's basically take where you are, Ms. Jones, would you mind explaining? How do y'all come up with kind of your goal for the percent of students to raise, you take your baseline, we we usually increase it. Usually about five. When we take the increase that our teams make, they set their goals as far as a year or two ago, but it is.
So we're we're talking somewhere now, about thirty one percent.
More than one.
How how was that prepared to other districts on size?
Well, that's a lovely question, but if you know, we come back from a year from COVID and so everyone is lower in the state because of COVID, because of the year that we had privacy that. And we, you know, our ratings, we we say in our ratings, we keep those the same, is there some increase? Of course, there's always growth, high school really excelled growth this past year. And they were eighty percent and then we were at eighty percent as well. So we're looking for growth for kids, so we know we're working with big community and then you're a bit behind by one base off of. So our goal is just to grow them, give them as high as what we can and then we'll. We do get credit and they issue a report cards again, grades if they haven't done that.
And steady.
And in our last literacy meeting with Desi, like for example, as Ms. Thomas was describing, what we did with with Solution Tree a few years ago was we set the literacy goal by when spring of twenty twenty four. Having eighty percent of our students on grade level in literacy up and down through all the grades. And so that was a five, that would have given us five years, so we divided the difference from where we are to eighty percent by five. And that means we have to increase by twelve point fifty four percent each year. So I think I think this spring's goal was to have, I think we're at. Want to say we're we're in the thirties, I think we're in the thirty range this year. We don't have, we won't have that test data until August first. And so that's that's part of the, again, as as Ms. Jones alluded to, that's part of the issue also. We've had to use our local test data to make guesses as to if the students are growing this much on these local administrations, we're hoping to see that parallel growth on the state test. If if that if hopefully that addresses it or explains it.
And we have to like report for grades for districts and they not only use that are at grade level, but they also look at the growth. So we had someone that was way low and they're almost at grade level, but they're not quite there, you still get credit for that growth if they may through all these different quality points to go into that. So that's when she's talking about the growth. You know, we have some that may not quite be to the rate yet, right, it's a few years to get there, but if we can show that they're growing every year, we still will. It's a few years to get there, but if we can show that they're growing every year, we still will.
And there, there are five pieces on their report cards. So for K through A, you get how they do on the test, how much they improved from the previous year. How your English language learners improved. And then there's this hodgepodge that they call just sort of the melting pot. That's like attendance and science and how, how many kids did this? And what do you offer in this and all these things? And then for high school is those same components, except they, they shrink the growth down. It's not as big a percentage of the final grade because you have to, you have to use those other percentage points and throw them in for graduation rate. So, uh, so again, it's, it's how the kids do it on the test of high school, how much they've grown from when they came over from middle school. And then, um, how, uh, what your graduation rate is for four years. And then you get half credit for those who, who graduate in five years. And then how your English language learners have improved. And then the hodgepodge, so called SQSS is what the name of that, that, that word is.
Now, now the big question is going to be, does that mean it's going to be a B or an F or C or a B? And I think that percentage that you just quoted, if, if they reach it and the graduation rate is a certain rate and that growth is there. It could be a D or a C versus an F. Right? And so I think that's what we're all kind of shooting for is, is gradually move up that chain each year. Move out of those, those lower grades into the higher grades. So just that percentage alone won't factor into that, that report or all these other, other things, the growth and the graduation rate will affect that. And, and what we seen like a GPS, for instance, is we're just within points of the state average. And so a lot of us are experiencing that too. We're just like within a couple of points. If we can keep moving towards that, closing that gap, which I think we all have closed the gap in the last couple of years. And there wasn't a report card for this, this previous year. But whenever they get the, the scores in the summer, we'll, we'll go through that again. So we will find out just how much of that gap we've closed and fallen.
Explain the new positions that were created, I guess, with the last, the May or meeting. I know Ms. Jones is taking another role, but and how that, because I think it's about reading. Right? I mean, it's not part that is about that. And with the, for those. Because it's not based on the barestom. We, um, basically the instructional coaching piece and the facilitator, they will be going, um, working with teachers in their professional communities. Their P L C knees on identifying with areas and looking at the data, figuring out whether they need to do remediation. How can we do it for those kids who are on target, you know, and making sure all of that's flowing. They also will be able to go into classrooms and coach, um, teachers who need help in this area or maybe this one needs it in this. They can be more individualized, professional development with that. They can build a model, teach a lesson to show that teacher and especially with the teachers. That'll be a term of support for them because they can work them, they can, you know, work with them on those things before that principal comes into the evaluation. You know, so they can help support that process. They can also, your secretary can also do some of the interventions, um, with students as they have time. But at the primary school, we wanted to make sure too that we really had, um, a little more focus. Because you want them already, you know, they leave their grade, they'd be reading. So, um, with our facilitator there, she'll do some reading intervention also. Um, and then our E S L teacher, um, she's also going to do part-time intervention. So they're going to get those teachers who are experts in what they do, working with those students who really need that extra support. Um, which we're hoping to help those students move and be reading before they transfer to middle school. So we're targeting primary school a little bit more heavily. Um, and then the middle and high school facilitator will work at both campuses where she's needed most. And that'll be collaboration with those principals.
More questions? Building improved plans. Right. Motion to. Point two, point three, point four, point five, point six, we do this in the past. VHS.
For the GPS, C M S, and VHS.
Motion to second, all, every, of the motions I have. Same time. Next time this is. So improve the weed spin therapy, L S N contact for speech services. Twenty two, point four. Twenty five, twenty six, and ten.
Ms. Jones, you can explain that one.
So our caseload for speech therapy, usually tutors from anywhere from thirty five to forty five students. And, um, that's a lot legally her case so can be for. That's a lot still to develop, to deliver quality services, continuing meetings and good paperwork in process. So last year we contracted with Kid Source to provide one day a week, which was on Wednesday to provide therapy services at the middle school and the hospital. We have one student in the hospital, um, that was receiving our tech services. That way my primary person didn't have to travel and then it gave her more calm at primary school. Because that's where her largest and most needed caseload is. So, and she also, she got to have a baby this year. So that, um, we advertised and started looking for an initial therapist to provide services during the maternity leave. So we didn't quite get to deliver every service that we needed to. So that's going to go over to the next school year so that we are sure that we deliver all those services that are on those I P's. If those students need, we will deliver those next school year. Um, they contracted people that I had, going to deliver two days a week. And so that's the best that we can do. So we will be delivering kids toward services to those students that do not get those services from the time April the twentieth to the end of school. So that person is going to cover that as well. She is a person out, um, she serves an album school district and I'm real excited to work with her. I will still give, we have the responsibility of processing all the paperwork since she is that, um, human person. And this is the only person that did apply and did a contract. So this is what I'm going to use.
For about on the side. This, this person's contract, we utilize this because we don't, we don't have the size district to have an in-house person. So we don't have.
We have one in-house person, um. Okay, the Dorsey is our in-house speech therapist. Legally, she can only have forty students. We have a lot of students that are. That are pretty demanding, not demanding, but they're pretty yet with the services that we need to provide. We have six at the middle school, I believe, and one at the high school. And by the time she travels and she delivers, that's almost three fourths of the day that is taken away from the middle school. So that person that we contracted and I'm recommending, she will do the middle school and the high school. And any evaluations that we might need help on. Um, but I'm still going to rely and claim my lead. We all do evaluations in the paperwork and a team meetings. I just want this person to be able to give a little bit of a pushing for delivery of services so she's not just slaying all the time. So it's just kind of a relief. I may need her two days a week to where we can deliver kids toward services. But other than that, it will go one day a week. Um, estimating about six weeks.
This is basically in your specialty.
Yes, we have recused a lot more medication. We have received catastrophic funding that we have not received in the past. We received it for today. So there is money in the budget for that. Yes. And legally, we are compelled to deliver those services according to those I P's.
Contract clarity. I know you, you got that in S L P A that there's no statement of what that means.
It, it should say in. Speech and language there is assistant. Why can't it be that?
That's definitely contract first.
It's an assistant that performs duties and then the guy that's like a graduate or something.
Honestly, I'm just getting the contract first. And if you are from the contract, be that, be that it's big, but yes, he'll be used.
So is the person who is going to be providing the, the therapy, is that a, a speech, language pathologist or an assistant?
It's a speech, language pathologist. And if she needs to, she can send an assistant that is under her.
Do they deal with that anymore?
No, sir. There are different rates. No. And we cannot recuse at the same rate. It's like almost three dollars an hour with thirty six on.
The therapist would be rated actually around eighteen seventy five. The assistant group that teaches.
So are they required to have this, the, the speech therapist perform a certain amount of the treatments?
Yes.
I know they have to perform the assessments, evaluations of that.
Right. And they have to do, they come in and they do, and I'm not sure of all of their rates. But they have to, one day a week or under a certain percentage of that case load, they have to do under the direction of a speech therapist.
Under the direction of, or is the speech mobile pathologist actually applying?
They do not have to. Well, we have way out on campus if they're there. I'd have to check their rates to make sure that that is her responsibility, the contract person, to feel that. We would not deal for it though if it was not. In compliance. It would not be really, I could say on it.
I just wondered if there was a requirement for them to actually be.
Yes, they have, they have, they have, they have specifications for that.
More questions? Not, you know, the motion to approve the weed spin therapy. Concerns for. Will it take me twenty four? Motion to second, all the paper of the motion I have. Close same time. Next time this is going to consider four different, closer to that for two accident insurance.
Three of them are actually combined and had slipped into your packet together after she already done the bonding. We're in them that had the ones from Mitch Mark, the number two, actually from Mitch Mark, um, with different other riders. And I wish that all of these, you know, no one is identical, I'll say that. No one more are identical. Like, look at the services provided. I really feel like, um, they're below this bid. The box, um, what we need in this comparable to the others. Um, you got plants as well. That is the, um, since we did them, this is the first one in there, the Bowland's specialty group. Um, at an annual premium of fifty seven hundred dollars. And we have used health special risks in the past that, um. They, they really compete with this one. And when I compare this one with that one, there's really. Nice experience services. And, and we really haven't even had to utilize it a whole lot the past few years. So I would not recommend the high family. This is a one-year term. So we, you know, over the first year, we're not satisfied with it. We're not, you know, easy to work with and change next year. That. If we said anything other than the lowest bid, we would have to look at the patient's supply. Yeah, because you didn't have a local, I'm rep there, the other law. So my recommendation is to go with that. I guarantee trust law, all, um, all see that fifty seven hundred, which is the low. This is a whole new, so if a student is injured at school or an athletic event, their insurance first, if they have it, will cover. And this fills the gap. So this isn't the primary interest, but it's a gap to, to start in the mail.
And first, how you go back in that fight? I mean, you have to, you have to come to the athlete red bear or?
Yeah, he would be a point contact or jurisdiction McDonald's. Your chief of one that actually.
I can answer that, you know, we've had a couple of kids that, that fall on playground and had incidents. And so they, they fill out paperwork with the nurse, helps them hit school and then they vol at the jurisdiction. That's how the place that works.
For about the. The three days.
Yes, she was. Can't verify that, I shouldn't. Yes.
He, uh, I'll recover, but Sunday, uh, Penguin was in raw with parent to, uh. To a guy who got the trouble on the path.
I believe it's travel to, from that, if it's for the parent, it might have to be on the bus. And that would be a same. I need the school field trip, students on a field trip. During the time of.
Those cats.
School bus.
A school bus.
I believe it has these transportation. So say dog, which takes this whole vehicle with three kids, that's still school transportation that would be covered. Because these. Full personnel, those are school students will be equal, that would be covered to.
Any more questions? Motion to consider option number four, X mark insurance.
Condition that we accept into our insurance, uh, culture, period, trust life or accident policy.
Motion say all, any more of the motions I have. Same time. Next time in business. The, uh, this quote. It's a.
That's like that two, two are actually pretty close. And it was actually a little less and then much easier to simulate it, especially for that metal shed. I think on the tentative agenda, I said, obviously, it's probably filed, but it's sounding less than that. These are the pretty close, um, for each piece of that, we pay playground at break. And we did, um, funding for a, a secret pay and every year and so much has to be spent before July first. And so she's wrapping up her budget with some of these improvements. To program, some of them are going to save you things and it is that we know what can be. That you see that shit.
Clarify any question. I assume. Oh, the four, four, pitch, twelve group. Next, I just see all constructions out now. Two of these, uh, reasons why. We consider, then that's all the pitch, what it's.
Okay, there's separate.
Lots of separate.
Yeah. They're getting the fixing from the. It's for sales, but then sequel construction is actually going to tear down the whole one. Put up the next one. Yeah.
So, so.
Yes. You want to speak to that budget, we have to scan this section of the budget. Right, at least one of you has to be one hundred percent. They're trying to find people for ten six. Or several blocks down, and all of that. You have a timer? If you've done, uh, in the block.
Sorry that the money's spent, or there is not like.
And they can use them for schools.
Part of what?
And they can use them for schools.
I do not doubt with them, just pretend they're doing all of that.
Have we had any history with, uh, with this company?
We did, um, people construction did a lot of concrete work.
I was pretty sorry, I have a third off.
They also do a lot of concrete work for ABC, I'm sure.
I'm not, I'm concerned. I'm a little concerned these, these, that we have school students.
Well, and this is an internal fence that, that I think they're going to replace on the first part. You're worried about the outer fence.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think they can have all that done, and then do the other, the other fence. Later, Ms. Woodson feels very comfortable with the, with the contractors' timelines to get it all done. She's, she's been working with them pretty hard the last few weeks.
Any more questions? Can I get a motion to approve this quote for Fred's Motors? Free day playground chain of payments project. Got motion set, all in favor of the motion, say that. All in the same time. I'm going to accept on this, for the labor portion of this project. Simple. Hey, it's, uh, discussing, I think, the portion of your city. All in favor, motion say that. All the same side. For simple construction, for, for taking back our sheet of materials. I'm going to move that discussion, I'm going to be able to get through the open seat. Got motion say, all, I think, the motion say that. All the same side. About moving thirty thousand eight hundred eighty eight dollars. That's expensive from off the road to the building facilities. Do you kind of remember what that really means?
Well, I can review what Ms. Ruhl sent me, and then if you have questions, you can answer them. The building facility spend is an old time, and Department of Ed no longer sends money using that code number. So that code number will cause exceptions, and our state reporting is when we forward. So the balance of the funds to be depleted, the transfer of those expenses will deplete the balance, so the building facilities have to stop using that code. And I know she worked with someone at the department on, for a move it to, and, yeah. You can explain it better than I, because you understand that part, the code. Quick fund that started in two thousand and eight. And now, we're all receiving funding since two thousand and fifteen on it. In two thousand and nineteen, because they saved on it, and then two thousand and nineteen, but you can't do the same anymore, definitely, if you're willing to. They can do that, but it's just set there, so they want to say, getting to go away. And so there are certain criteria for what you can use to spend that money on. And some of those are the magnificent, they're so, they leave thirty thousand out of our operating fund into the building fund, and within that, they will lower operating fund expenses, and it will eliminate this fund that they'll say, you got it, yeah, for that. So it's going from operating fund to building facilities, and the expenses, what expenses will they, their operating expenses and those expenses will be uh, the expenses to building facilities.
Or just housekeeping.
Yes, but because it's a, a building fund, I think told it more past two, thirty days.
Any questions? Which might have been stretched to operate.
I'll say.
We got motion say, all in favor of motion say that. All, yes. Okay, I'd say approved, moving roof repair expenses and insurance reimbursement from operating fund to business fund over four hundred, forty nine thousand seven hundred sixty six dollars, seventy six cents.
Well, I knew that was what Ms. Ruhl was saying. We have authority federal funds, they do something called maintenance of effort, which means whatever you've been spending, you need to continue to spend. You can't supplement your expenses with federal money. So what they do is they look at what you spend, and then you have to keep maintaining a non percent of those expenses. There are certain things that they will eliminate out of that, and that's like some capital access, and some of that does not count. Well, our roof is being considered a repair, since it's being laid over, it's existing roof is not re-considered a new roof. So what's going to happen is, that's going to be just a regular Yes. of a district, and it's going to push our expenses up an additional four million, four million dollars. It's going to be in two years, so it's going to be done this year, and so next year. Which, what's going to happen is, they're going to expect us to maintain those expenses. So what we're going to do is secondly, that out of our state local fund, move it into the building fund. And the expenses to the building fund, and then replace the insurance reimbursement and expenses in the building fund. That will get it out of our operating fund, and that will get it so that it's not having to be part of our maintenance of effort. So basically, they, they deal with us, we're for skill wise. We submit that to insurance, they try to check, put it in the mail, we try to check, put it in the mail. But it just needs to be in the building fund instead of operating, the expenses coming out in the reimbursement fund, and so we don't have to maintain that level of spending in the future, because we obviously can't do that. For the accounting issue. Yes, yeah, it's a accounting issue because from having to maintain that level of expenses in the future. You know, this was.
We're, we're, I'm giving you all the points, as we have so many new names, it might not explain either that, I'm not sure I was telling all that. Can I get a motion to approve moving this repair expense money, which is reimbursement for operating fund to building fund? The motion is, so, in favor of motion, say that, at the same time. Overending into, out of mail, which is personnel, and going to accept, so, for that. Okay. Our executive session, even back into our record session. I want to get a motion to accept all personnel package, excluding any time to do. Uh, motion, uh, second. On the fiber, uh, from motion, put, put you up, thank you, say that. Yes. Same time. I think, we'll be back at the facility partnership program agreement for the gym, the team mayor. Let's go back to the second part of the personnel. I think the motion to motion to accept the, I am certain for a period of listening. I think the motion again, uh, Andrew Viall, as a human, basically, coming to you, to do the, next, uh, move, uh, to accepting the general. Motion say, all, in favor of the motion say that. Next time, there's the, the, the facility partnership program agreement for the, the mayor, that's what, wait, it's, I've been seven.
When is my?
Here's the, here's the bill on that, and we did it before you because it had initially been accepted because it was a platform. However, it could be rescinded at any time, if we now, in October twenty eighth of twenty twenty three. If it's not rescinded by then, then it's got to be under contract by October twenty eighth of twenty twenty three. That's next year, not this year. Now, here, here's the words, this is, this was a platform, this was before I came, when it was most of plan was submitted. This was one of the projects submitted that plan. Last year, they said the plan's approved. This year, they tell you how much they're going to match, that's how it happens. So this is going to have a notification, here's how much we're going to contribute, here's how much the district contributes. This is for HVAC and a lot of electrical work, that will long be able to install that for the big gym. I just, it's all, we're a big gym. Oh, this is not requirement, but say, you know, some users have, some users don't. Um, now, the portion, we went on page sixty six. Yes, so, and on this year, it would be four hundred and two thousand dollars, so, options, a few of that. Options are being that, if you chose to make it forward. In our S R budget, we budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for HVAC. Next month, I'm leaving some things for this person, because we need to get one more bid. And for instance, options on air filtration for the target district that will take about fifty thousand of that, but it's not a replacement HVAC, it's going to put some filtration in there to make cleaner and in our buildings. And because of another grant that we have access to for about fifty something thousand, it will take about fifty of that, three hundred. So there's two hundred and fifty thousand, if y'all chose to allocate it to deals that can be allocated, but that still leaves a hundred and fifty thousand not. Options there are, you know, if you look at this, and you look at long term on a new building, or salaries or anything, you know, going back, and that's for mileage increase is one possibility. Jason, Paul's blog, Stevens, and our financial advisor can tell you exactly how much you need to fund, what you're looking for. You can look at a loan, and for, and to pay back, which you will, be sure to look at your hit social, you're already paying, because you don't want to have to strain the district. So, again, it's something, you have some time. I would suggest letting Leslie Dyson Dawson, who's the facilities person, Jason Paul, come in and talk through those options, with you, once you ask questions, we're going to be informed, because again, you can still rescind this, you don't have to accept it. Because if you, if you don't rescind it by October twenty eighth, next year, you got, you know, under contract, you know, it can still, you know, takes some time to start it after that, but I, I would suggest letting them come in, and explain it. Listen, let me tell, because that's very, very specific for me, so that's the general that I got from Leslie. If you have any specific questions about it, you know, I can get with her, but like I said, I'll be working with everybody. I'm saying to, to get down there sometime. Well, it's not actually, it's just our joint review. If I can, and their other, I didn't put it here, but I did have a few things I wanted to report on, and also, y'all, an email was just printed. I do have each of our board members registered for the May Board Training on June thirtieth, in plus feelings. And you should have got the confirmation email about that, if you didn't want that or not, or any of that I received. And this year, in school choice, those have to be submitted by May burners to, um, we have twelve students who present out the board district. And one is going to press kit. The other eleven are split between, you'll get watched off. One is going to in from press. Last year, we had a pledge, it was four out for you, and this year, it's more out. And some of those are like four in one household, you know, not like that many different individuals. Seven thousand dollars, huge. And also, right, as of right now, there is no universal free lunch for next year. And, you know, we have the past few years with the U S C A labors. And so, so right now, we will have to charge students based on their income, so it's been very important for, you know, our principals and everybody to really work on getting those applications in for the students that need free or reduced lunch. And really work on quality pay, because it's going to be hard for people to pay when they haven't had to. I know there is a group, you know, really working, this is a federal, you know, thing, so the government, federal, and Tom and Trish needed here, say, that they are trying to get, you know, universal free lunches. And, as of right now, it will be paid lunch again, unless they qualify for free or reduced. We talked a little bit about the roofers already, I have it on here, and their primaries coming out, they are coming back here after they finish the primary to do this on the administration building. And then they also some have the press slots that we've got. The only thing left from the health store. And the only thing left from the Hillstorm is, we're, we're having trouble on the is for the, um, the lights on each of the fields, the covers or being that on the baseball, so they don't even make those kind of lights anymore, and they want it's like a different term, and they have to work with insurance, and they'll give me one of the first, and they won't get contacted about it, so that's on hold for tomorrow. Um, so that should be resolved, obviously, just to know what virtual, those lights, but that's the only thing left from the Hillstorm, with insurance to take care of. And Mr. Miller already mentioned it, we should have our test thing back by August first, which we're, pardon, have it by August, it could be single, but by August first. Very large schools can start working, and we're looking at, you know, is, is it virtual, to be written in the mail, move forward. We are fully, the accreditation, same script accreditation at the end of the year, um, did anything that we were fully accredited, so we didn't have any citations or exceptions, all of our accreditation rules were, were good. And, and then I did wanna just mention that Mr. Bell will be representing, uh, us, at the A D E, the Department of Ed Summit, A G Y, and he's gonna represent the Southwest Arkansas region as the parent family community engagement coordinator, and speak to that group about some strategies there. Thank you for stepping out and representing, while we garden at the Southwest region at that, at the statewide. So, the long exposure there. That's all I have, and wish I had anything else or any questions. Not all of our, I don't know what I just heard.